Great, David you wanted to.
The beginning is all introductory stuff.
Not really, but yeah.
It's always like this, go for it.
So, this is a meeting of the Budget and Finance Subcommittee. We're, so I'm calling it to order. And we'll call Lindsay, are you here?
Present.
David's here, Kendra's on her way.
Right.
So we're, we can get started.
Fabulous.
Excellent, thank you.
I'll jot down a tone for Kendra to read from and decide what she wants to say.
Yes.
Right.
So, so we're here this evening to present to the Budget and Finance Subcommittee the FY21 Superintendent's Recommended Budget. As you know, this is a work that has been in the progress since early fall and has required several meetings and discussions and debates and everything else to get to the place we are tonight, which is to present to you what we are recommending for the FY21 budget. Click. So, as has been the case since my arrival and even before I leave, when we create the budget, we ground it in our Watertown Public Schools mission, which is to prepare all students for life by engaging them in challenging and meaningful education within an inclusive diverse community.
Yay Kendra.
So, as long as you can recite the mission, you're all set.
Before you sit down.
The Watertown Public Schools, they can do that.
As long as you know we're preparing all students for life, right?
Definitely.
So, click. As, thinking of beginning last year, we implemented our district improvement strategy. It's a four-year plan and that, that plan is grounded in four strategic objectives. They are clearly aligned with equity, excellence, and community. So the first is around equity, the second is around excellence, the third is around community, and the fourth is around building for the future. When, click, when we developed our, I don't think so, I don't. So anyways, when we created our budget priorities for the FY21 budget, we did that with the strategic objectives in mind. And we presented to the Budget and Finance Subcommittee as well as the School Committee our priorities in developing the budget. And I think as we go along, I'm not going to read this because we've already reviewed this as a Subcommittee. But as you see how it is that we built the budget, I think that everything that we're trying to promote and do is completely aligned with the priorities that we set out back later in the fall. So, we had priorities for the first one, for the second one around excellence. This is just continuation of our effective programming and Dr. McGinnis is going to speak a lot about that moving forward. She actually, we can go back to, sorry, go back to objective one for one second. A lot of what we're talking about in terms of equity also, I believe that, again, Dr. McGinnis is going to talk, speak a lot about our social emotional learning and, as well as our multi-tier systems of support. I do believe that that is really the focus of our work when, when all is said and done moving forward in terms of the budget and the requests that we have. And then the excellence, again, it's about our implementation of our curriculum and our support for our teachers in terms of their continuous learning. And you know that we are really focused on adult learning and continue to embed it support. Objective three around community, that's right. So, you know, this is the idea of how it is that we engage the community. You know, as you'll, as we talk about this a little bit later, we are implementing through the budget some strategies to help to more effectively communicate. And then last but not least, our priorities were around the Building for the Future initiative. And although this is, you know, something that we begin next year, in the coming years, I think you will see some budget requests around how we prepare our staff for moving into new buildings. I don't mean about, you know, how do we pack boxes, but how do we actually deliver curriculum in buildings that are completely different than what we're accustomed to now. And that goes from elementary all the way to the new high school. So, those are the priorities that we set forth and as we went about the process of developing the budget, we kept those priorities in mind every time that we considered new requests or allocations within the budget. So, this is just a snapshot of our enrollment by our, our school and grade. You know, we always are mindful of enrollment when it comes to staffing and increases based on enrollment. We think right now that based on the budget that we created, we don't necessarily have requests that are completely tied to enrollment. You know, last year we did have three increases in elementary staff, but right now we don't feel that based on our projections and based on our enrollments that our, our requests are really driven necessarily by enrollment. It's more about programs and ensuring the successful implementation of programs. So, one, and, I know you're, are you looking at the, you're looking at the demographics, I was just curious where you're looking at.
I was looking at this.
No, 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 no. I was just, you know, as I said, sorry.
I swear I'm on camera.
It's better if there's, if there's a large crowd, I would not be looking over your shoulder.
That's okay.
People out there in the general public. But I think one thing we talked about last night, and I will present to the School Committee our enrollment projections, because I think that, you know, there, there had been kind of an idea that we were reducing enrollment steadily or even just staying pretty neutral over the years. But I do call your attention, just as I said last night, to, you know, kindergarten grades one, two, three, and those four grade spans that we have, K1, 2, 3. You'll see that as they progress through our schools, I think that they will dramatically have an impact on our future, including building for the future. So, the next slide talks about our district demographics and, you know, I do believe, I know this is a Subcommittee meeting, but I was thinking as we were reviewing this, I would like to provide for the larger school committees, this is just a note to myself, just a little bit of a, of a multi-year comparison about our, our district demographics. Because we've had some changes and not just, I mean, for example, you know, the, the enrollment by race and ethnicity, you know, our Hispanic population is growing. It's, it's not just that, but I, I look down also at the, the box below and you'll notice that our English language learners are going up, which I would like to demonstrate a little bit better when we go to the School Committee, but our special education numbers are actually decreasing. So, we've seen some trends in, in demographics over the last couple of years that definitely impacts over time. So as you recall, in the past, we were actually above 20% in terms of special ed, as high as at one point in time 23%. And our ELs, you know, back several years ago were below 10. So we, we definitely have some shifting demographics and I think a multi-year comparison would be great for the School Committee.
Can I ask you a question about that?
Yes.
When you're looking at change to demographics, especially around English learners, would it be possible to also identify the increase in Slade students that we talked about recently?
I think I can.
Possible?
I don't know if we have that, I mean, the, the Director of ESL would have that.
Right, well, just kind of, because like we've talked about a little bit like at middle school, there's been a huge difference in like kids coming in much later in their educational experience, participating in our EL programs and stuff.
Right.
That population in particular just requires a lot of service and hands-on to make sure that those kids are in our community and succeeding. And so I think that that's something people are interested in.
Yes.
In terms of it's a little different than like our ELs and Ls.
Yes, who, who are the ELs?
Yeah, exactly.
Specifically. And, you know, the other thing which is a conversation that I, that I've been having is, are, when you talk about white, please understand that white means Brazilian, white means Middle Eastern, white means Armenian. You know, that is, that category for Watertown, I think is a little misleading in terms of, you know, what does that really mean? It doesn't, you know, mean Middle America, it means there are several ethnic groups that are considered or counted as white, which are very diverse, so.
Does, does he separate a race and ethnicity marker in their demographics or they only report it this way?
They only report it that way, but we can report out, I'm just, now we're having a demographic dive, we should talk about this. But, but I think it would be interesting to, right, do you want to get into the budget or?
I know, sorry.
So, I think it would be interesting to have some information around what languages and what percentage of students speak a particular language. Because, for example, you would know our Portuguese-speaking students, you could either say they're from Portugal or they're probably from Brazil or some other smaller areas. But it, I think it would give you a better sense of our population.
And who Watertown is.
Yes. I just think that's a little sometimes misleading, so.
Can I ask us one question?
Yeah.
I did notice in our elementary schools only, because I was looking at the positive report card, that it looked like the school was getting more diverse and less economically disadvantaged. That was, that was the number, the switch, because we saw from last year to this year. I, I don't know if that's a trend throughout all our levels, but as, I think it's not. Only at the high school, I think we're getting more economically disadvantaged, I don't know if that's my understanding, but that would be interesting to see what the trends are at each levels, right?
Yes.
Okay.
We should do, we should do a little deeper dive on demographics.
I think it would be interesting.
Interesting, yes. I don't necessarily think, and I don't, I'm just saying, I don't think the high school is becoming more economically disadvantaged. I think that there's always that, that Title One conversation around who's eligible and who isn't, and yes, that's based on poverty. But I don't think there's a, a, an increase in economically disadvantaged based on high school. I think it's just, I don't know, I mean, I.
I don't know, that was my understanding, but that's not based on any data, I just thought it closed the case, but.
Yep.
Okay.
Kendra, on our ELs, that population of students, just for example, I just got this today, 162 students are Portuguese-speaking native language. 156 are Spanish, 41 are Pashto, and 34 are Arabic, and 51 are Armenian, that's the population.
So, 51 and what was the Armenian?
Armenian was 51, Arabic 34, Spanish 156, Pashto 41, and Portuguese 162.
Yeah, so over 220 of the, what is categorized as white probably are, are either Arabic-speaking, and more. I mean, I'm, I'm just, again, that's a good point of, there, the percentage, if you're to break down, it would be, it would show a little bit more of the diversity of Watertown, because this doesn't portray, I think, who we are.
Yeah. Well, first language not English does show that though.
Yep. It does, but it, but again, first language not English is Spanish, but we have a, a category of Hispanic. So you, you know if you're speaking Spanish, you're probably already disengaged into Hispanic, but it's, not that it impacts the budget so much, but it does reflect the fact that we have a, a different population than I think 10 years ago in terms of, you know, who we're educating in our schools and, you know, for example, you're right about slave or whatever it might be, there, it's changing.
Certainly the Portuguese and the Spanish population is changing a lot.
Yes. Yeah. I can't do the quick math, but it sounds like, almost like 6 to 7% of our population might be either Brazilian or Portuguese. I mean, that's significant, so, and that's just based on language, I mean, there's probably others that, anyways, okay.
Okay.
So, our NESDEC enrollment for the next 10 years, again, this is something I'd like to discuss with the larger School Committee, shows an increase of, you know, approximately 100 students, which is roughly 3% growth over 10 years, oh, that would be doing very quick math. But it, you know, I, as I speculate, and I, there's no hard data to indicate that I do believe as our new schools come online that we'll see a difference in the enrollment projections. Because you cannot project for people staying in the town, for people moving back from private schools, for a variety of things that are not in traditional, let's look at birth rates and, you know, high grade. So, that's just another point.
One, one other thing to look at too is the, the year, that third grade, that third, fourth grade, that's when the new school's going to be open, the high school.
Yes, when we have the large increase in our population and then we have a new high school, yes.
And so it'll both drive more students to be in Watertown as well as maintain those, I mean, when those families are seeing a new school online, they're less likely to go anywhere else.
Right. We saw as, we saw this year in the ninth grade, a, a, less of a, of a drop that we thought we would have from kids coming out of eighth grade. So I think there's already some indication that maybe more people are persisting with the Watertown Public Schools than, but you're right, I mean, like, once you hit 220, 240, even if you take the average private, let's say private school or any school, is 15% of our school-aged childrens.
Yeah.
So, you know, if you do the, again, quick math, if you're at 900 students and only 15% are going, if they all still go to private school, that's still more than 720.
You want to share those?
Okay.
Yes.
So, for this graph in particular, I think that for the size of our district, an increase of approximately 100 students over 10 years is actually a pretty big number, but the scale chosen doesn't show that, and so like if you.
Would you like, would it start from 2,000 to 3,000 or?
Or even if you cap it at 3,000 and stretch it out and the bars become bigger, you can see that change bigger. I'm just saying, it's like, I think it is significant, in this it doesn't look significant.
Right.
It's all about representation of what you're trying to say, but 104 students, like, is a big number?
For Watertown.
For Watertown.
Yes.
And so I think that we can just represent that in a graphic that shows the change a little bit better.
Yeah, I think I agree with you.
If you're a math person watching the talk.
Again, this is just a, a more detailed representation of the enrollment projection, which again, we'll, we'll talk about at the larger School Committee, but I just think we need to be mindful of that in the future years. But for this budget year, we don't have any implications in terms of staffing needs based on enrollment. And now I'm going to hand it back to Heidi for a little review of the budget process and some overview of the actual FY21 budget.
Can we just, can we just, can we just do this, please, with this slide?
Absolutely.
Let's get this up. So, this is our budget calendar, which was.
We've done all of those beginning months and now we're in March.
Yes, and so we're, yes.
So, this is our overall, which you've seen before, but at this point, when we go forward, the priorities that we spoke about at the last Budget and Finance will now be baked in into the Superintendent's Recommended. So, again, for people that are watching perhaps for the first time, they just quickly say that we were given a 5% increase guidance from the town. You can see how the numbers play out between FY20 and FY21. And with our level service budget that was, you know, prior, our presentation, we ended up with 145,000 essentially remaining for some of the priorities that the Superintendent just talked about, you know, related to our strategic plan and, and our goals. So, we're asked, I'll just briefly go through this, we're asked of the last Budget and Finance Subcommittee to insert a little bit, just so the people at home would understand what a level services budget is. There's level funded and there's level service. Level funded is the exact same amount of dollars, this is level services, which means it includes inflation, any bargaining unit increase, increase in salaries for non-aligned that's outside of the bargaining unit. It is essentially delivering the same services that we did this year. And whether there's contraction or expansion in enrollment, which we really don't have anything that's like that that's driving anything in this one, this year, that is also incorporated. So, we start with rolling up all of the salaries, which might include for teachers, people in the teacher's bargaining unit could have land changes. For everyone else, they may have steps depending on their pay scale, the cost of living increase. Or we might have turnover that somebody that was at the top of the scale left and maybe making a higher salary. And then in the meantime, we've rehired someone at the bottom of the scale or a lower step and we had a savings. All of those things roll in of what we know at the time when we're putting this forward. On the non-salaries, we give guidance to everybody that they can go up 2% on their expense budgets, which is just for inflation, it's pretty standard. However, there may be, and they can move that between their lines, if they know that they need less in one line and more in another this year, they have the ability as a budget manager to move that around. Overall budget should come in around 2%, unless there's some factor that really just doesn't fit in. It might, it might be a mandate, there might be new licenses or new software that we purchased or things along that line that may make things go slightly under or over. People also will reduce their budget if they find that they've had something in their budget for a number of years, that now something's online or it's electronic maybe and they don't need hard copies of something or whatever that may be, they also look to see if they have excess in a budget line and they don't need it in another line and they may come in with a reduction here or there on some of their loans. So, all of that is level service. Within level service, there can be significant drivers and I, we were just talking about the English language learners, but also special, special education. Those are sub-populations within our overall student population. So while we may not have an increase in student population, we could have increases driven in some of the sub-populations that drives needs. English language, and we just had a pretty lengthy discussion about some of those things. So, we may need additional resources to, I'll just, I'll say, English language learners, we may have had a certain amount that we used before in the budget and we may have to increase that because the population within our overall population has grown for English language learners and we need additional supports. That's level service. We may have a few more students in that sub-population, but we still are delivering the same services, whether it's, you know, 10 kids or 100 students, you know, we still are delivering the services that we did last year for those students who need those services. So that is level service. And I put on the last part, during any year, once the budget is approved, between then and when we do the next budget, sometimes there are positions that, or needs that come up through the year that we identify that were not known at the time of the budget and that is requested and comes before the School Committee and they can determine if they want to fund that. Once we identify something else that has also changed, there's some savings out of district tuitions or things like that. And we explain, you know, where we were funded from and they have the right to make those changes during the year, those become level service in the next year. So, again, that's mostly for the people at home or whatever, but that's how a level services budget is built and that's how this one was built. So, this is our total level service budget that, you know, seen before. I will talk about a couple of things in the lines after we go through the slides, just so I can explain a couple of things there. Just in a different graphic, for people to see the percentages. And then, as with last year, we broke our total budget down into salary and non-salary. And again, these are reported by cost center as has been traditionally presented in Watertown. So you'll see the different cost centers that the School Committee would like to see that in. You'll see a couple of years of history and then what was the adopted budget from 20, and of course, we haven't spent that yet, so there's no actual figure there of where we'll land. And then what our 21 level service budget is and both the dollars and the percentage of change. And we can go back to these if you have questions after we go through. And as I said, there are sometimes some significant things that happen, whether it's on the recently voted priority list or other things. So, I, we have many small bits and pieces that happen in a budget and a budget this size, but we just bring up significant ones for these slides to point out. So, recently in the priority list, we requested the addition of one social worker, which will serve middle school and Lowell. We budgeted for a Master 6, we don't know until we hire the person where they'll actually come in, they could come in at lower, but that's our, our target of where we, Masters 5 rather, of where we target for a placeholder until we've hired.
Heidi, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
So, for this to be level service, that means there's some sort of increase in population, otherwise it would be level service.
Or programming.
Okay.
Or programming. So if you go back to, so say for example, the social worker.
Yeah.
The social worker is the one, is actually the position that you approved in January because of the fact that the ISP program is at the Lowell and the grade span grouping requires that we now split the, the kids up because we have incoming higher grade, actually we have kindergarten students, now we're going to have a 4 and a 5, which means that we couldn't have them all in the same classroom, so we had to add a teacher, which we were able to do because we had actually an open position, add a social worker to, we had a .5, but now that we have more students, we had to increase that. So, that's a level service because we needed it to run special education.
Okay.
That's why that, is that kind of answering that question? And the same with, so the, the nurse, although the nurse is, we haven't hired the nurse, that's coming up in FY21. We need that for programming with the preschool, separating the preschool from the hospital, we need to have a standalone nurse here, which then takes away the, the, we had one other, the preschool nurse helped to serve also for being a prep nurse or coverage, so we needed to supplement that with another nurse. So that's level services because we couldn't function without it.
Okay.
Same with PLS, we've committed to the PLS program. If we don't have a PLS teacher in the grades for and then potentially five, then we don't have a PLS program. So that's why these are level services and not like a, a request or a priority that we could potentially run the schools without.
What about the, what about the registrar, why is that level service?
Well, I can tell you that it's level, so, levels, okay, how do you, let me see how best to explain this. I think we tried to talk about that in one of the Subcommittee meetings. Right now the registrar is .5 and they bring in all of the preschool and elementary school students and then it's building-based for middle and high school.
Yeah.
We have found across the board, and no fault of the people doing the jobs, but we are, we are not able to effectively or efficiently register students from middle school, high school and this been detrimental to our system. Meaning, I don't want to go too much into the specifics, but.
It's been inconsistent.
It's been very inconsistent and, and sometimes somebody who's not in the central registration area doesn't understand programming and so they might assume that a student needs to be something or somewhere and that's not the case because there isn't a centralized thing. So we are, we are not able to, I would say, we're not able to really deliver our best programming and it's been the case on several occasions. So that's why I consider that level services.
I understand the need for it and you made a, a good argument for it.
If I could actually back on.
I struggle with the level services.
So actually, if I could, and that was all the detail of why it's needed, but, but it, it sort of boils down to what I said a moment ago, that School Committee has the right to approve positions between one budget year and the next and these are all positions that the School Committee already approved. So that, that, it's not new, that's really why it's level service.
It's been pre-approved.
Yes, that's what I'm saying, it wasn't in the priorities list. This has already been vetted and approved by the School Committee. It's, it's sort of, it's, it's like, it's in for this year.
The registrar was a.
Not the registrar.
I was going to say.
I'm sorry.
We talked about the registrar though.
We did, we talked, we talked about it in Subcommittee. And it was because, same idea of the need for having the full-time registrar. Years ago, a couple, two, three years ago, you brought in a .5 registrar, so that was a new position for the district. But now we have found that, and to your point Kendra, we could pull it out and it's going to be number one on the priority list. So your delta increases by 26, 250 and you can spend it.
It's just a matter of putting it into, it's, it doesn't matter for the bottom line. I just, I, I'm not sure how I would explain if that's level service, that's all.
And I will say then that's on me because I'm not always at your weekly meetings, the teleconversations, I didn't realize that this, until right now, that this wasn't already approved by School Committee, so I apologize. So that's, that's my error.
I think we as a leadership team have definitely indicated that we believe that we need this in order, I mean, not just the leadership team, it goes beyond. I mean, this has been something that's been discussed at the School Department level as something we can't, we can't continue in the way that we're doing it.
Yeah, no, I, I fully support the, the addition, it's just a question.
So, let me ask you in the Budget and Finance Subcommittee, would you prefer us to pull this out for the final, when I do the public hearing and put it as a priority?
I think it makes sense as a priority.
Okay.
I don't know what.
No, I, I mean, I kind of agree that there's a, you can always come on, come down on either side of this, right? As whether you can make a case for both level services and not level services, but I do think that it's harder to, because it's not a pre-approved position and even though there's a significant need for it, we probably should just.
I think that was being, that is pre-approved, like Heidi said, is a decent line to draw.
Right.
Yeah, and, like I said, that was some communication issue that I saw that there was conversation in.
It's not a knock.
No, that's on me, no, totally on me, I thought it was already vetted and discussed, but not yet to the voted, but already vetted and discussed, that's on me.
So, again, this might be another one that we can pull out and put on the priority list. But we have also, through the course of, as you know, my traveling roadshow, to talk to teachers about what is and what isn't working and what is very clear. And again, I, again, I consider this to be, I can't, I can't run school without it. Our co-teachers don't have any collaborative time to meet prior to the school year. So, this would be one day for co-teachers to meet together before school starts to plan for the year. And that, that has come up over and over again as a, a pretty dramatic need. I don't know, Lindsay, you could speak to that a little, I'm just saying it's a trigger.
And, and I just want to say that this one, it's not a position, so.
Yeah, it's a thing.
We don't, and other things, you know, through the year, people or teachers, whether it's overtime or, or just extra hours that teachers might do for different PD and all different things, you know, that happens throughout the year as part of, into our budget, but it's not, it's not something that, from my viewpoint anyway, and everybody has their own, I don't see that as outside of level service. That is no different than if we had teachers come in for a day of PD and we already have that in our PD budget. So, that's really them planning and getting together for the year, almost like a workshop day, but those are not usually an additional ask, but it can go either way.
Right, but it's not in the PD budget now. I, I would do the same thing, I would pull it out. It's, it's a really important thing, it's actually a good thing to highlight to say, you've spoken to the, this is a, this is an acute need and there's good reasoning for it. So I, I give, if anyone else has an opinion on that.
I think it's an opportunity to talk a little bit more about how important the ask is for it, if it's not.
Not level service.
If it's not service.
Sure.
Make it happen.
Okay, so.
We need for one bucket to the next.
Yes.
So, the preliminary, again, the expense budget, again, this is something that's been presented before.
Yeah.
And again, as we've said before, as any new information comes in, we make tweaks, which can sometimes happen every day or every other day as we're tightening up. It's, we, we do everything with the latest information we have, but if something new comes up and there's a couple of things, as we mentioned before and I'll mention again tonight, that we're still possibly going to hear a change in, but that's, this is everything we have right now as if, as if that's the final. Again, budget drivers for the expenses, we mentioned before, the, a big budget driver for this year is the added district tuition increase. A lot of that, 400,000 of that is based on the Perkins tuition that we've discussed.
Can we do like another bullet, I mean, like a sub-bullet?
Oh, Perkins?
I really think that that needs to be called out specifically, because that's huge.
It is, yeah.
And it's a big part of the, for 725,000 and 400,000 of it is one school.
Right.
I do think we should note that.
Okay.
And you've done it in other, other things, presentations have been in.
We, because we added like a line in here, we sort of just. We, because we added like a line in here, we sort of just collapsed a little bit, something the other one.
If we could do a quick sub-bullet on it, I think that would be helpful.
Okay.
Please notice we budgeted for it. I mean, it's not like we're saying.
Yes.
Of course, I just think it's important to know what it is and why.
Yeah, okay. The Minute Man capital increase, we already talked about that. Minute Man, and these were all in the prior presentation. It was going up $1,600 per student on just the capital to pay for that new building over there, which is lovely, I hear, but obviously expensive. And the, right now, we use the 2% inflation factor, which we usually use on their tuition. We still have not heard from Minute Man what the state is setting for their tuition. They had some kind of a glitch that they were working with Department of Education on to get that finalized. So it could go up a little bit, but that's the latest information that we have right now. I just want to talk about that there are, Didi had mentioned even last night's school committee meeting about climate and culture surveys. There is no additional cost for that. It's been reallocated within her budget lines. So we wanted to point it out so that it piggybacked on last night that the surveys are very important, and, but it was just a reallocation that, as I said, all budget managers have a right to do within their budgets. But we don't want, we wanted everyone to know that that was not an extra cost.
And we're doing this this year.
Yep.
And.
Next year and the year after forever and ever, great. I just, we're doing a three-year contract to start with.
Super.
And then, again, we.
What are you doing?
And again, we still, we have one bus budgeted for the Conif, and just so everybody listening out there, it doesn't mean that we're only going to offer one bus. I want to make that clear. We have budgeted one bus for now because we do not know if we are paying for the busing for kind of next year or if we're not. So should we hear sometime soon that we are not responsible to pay for that bus? That 66,000 will become available. Should we hear that we might need two buses and we have to add them to the budget? We'll have to jockey things around a little bit to, to pay for that.
And we don't even know how many students are going to be taking.
Not yet, we're getting close to it. No, we're going to be opening registration in about a week.
Great.
And so, so just so, like I said, the public knows. I don't want anyone assuming that there's only one bus, and there'll be a wait. We've already said we're busing everyone that wants to, and this is not indicative of the service that we'll provide. It's just indicative of having a in-between of, you know, what, what should we budget? So. Again, the priorities list, which we've gone over prior to in the subcommittee. And as you can see, the HR assistant, the coach for Conif, and the middle school ESL teacher. These were all supported in the budget finance subcommittee forum and the school committee. And we explained that there is a slight deficit in funding these three. However, we always have turnover. And to speak to that, since we did this before, I don't have anything in my hand and paper yet, so I don't put it in yet. But just recently, we had two people resign, and we'll be filling those positions. But I can't say if it'll be, you know, the same salary or less. We also notified of someone that's going to go on a one-year leave of absence, which I mentioned before, and that will be filled with a long-term sub. Again, I can't say what the savings will be until we hire. So there's a couple of things there. I did mention at the subcommittee meeting that we have the year three lease for the multi-function student activity buses budgeted right now into next year, and I intend to pay that next week. I got a, an amended lease schedule payment. We'll save a little over $1,000 by paying now rather than in July. So that's going to happen, you know, save $1,000. But that'll free up that lease payment, which is about, I think, $37,000 off the top of my head in next year's budget, which will help pay for some of this deficit and some of the, the next slide.
So those are two new retirements?
They're resignations.
Resignations.
Oh, resignations.
Of people at, at pretty high steps.
Anticipate, there'll be some turnover savings there, but until we hire.
And that will be in like the personnel report, so?
Probably for the next month, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So then, we go on to the unfunded list. And these are sort of batched here to make it a little clearer. I'm going to jump down to first for the easier ones, which we mentioned a couple of weeks ago. There's two minor software costs, excuse me, that people did not have in their budget. Oh, boy, that's awful. Oh. It's interesting. Okay, thank you, George. So those can be absorbed in budgets. We're not, we're not really worried. People can move a little bits and pieces around, so we're not really concerned about those. Those will happen. The below-level libraries for K-2, classroom libraries and grade-level libraries. This actually will be a little bit expanded because we have our, what is Devoe Park's actual?
Kate, literacy.
Literacy, it's really long. She's working on making sure that all, all three elementaries have the same, at the same time, and we'll get the order in. But we're going to be paying that out of this year's funds that become available from budget turnback. So we're putting that as a priority, so those should be funded in this year. So we don't have concerns about that. The third category up, I guess I should put these in a different order maybe, but we were trying to keep them in priority. Responsive classroom and embedded PD, obviously, we cannot prepay for contracted services or salaries. So these are not something, regardless of what we have for fund at the end of the year, that we can pay for ahead. However, the $37,000 that I just talked about with the vans, if I pay those, and I call them vans and buses, as you can see, it's 43,000, and that will be a 37,000 line that will free up. So we essentially already know between the turnover that we know of and whatever else if we can cover these two lines. So that only leaves us the two grade eight teachers and the drama teacher. And Didi had spoken to this at a prior meeting, so whether she decides to go into more detail right now. Essentially, as we see some of this turnover, or the Conif bus, or some of the things that may occur, then, as we have in the past, we'll just go to the next things on the priority list. Obviously, with discussion with the school committee adding positions and all that, when and if things do free up from some of these decisions that have yet to sort of, you know, follow. So those would be the things that we'd be looking at.
I ask a question about your grade eight teachers. I don't want to miss the window to hire another people.
Yep, we just talked about that today.
Okay.
So what I anticipate is that right around, unfortunately, right around the public budget hearing time is when we'll start to settle on some of these questions. Meaning, Minute Man enrollment, or the Conif bus, or a variety of things. So what I would hope is, and as what Heidi just said, if that all happens, that we end up with an additional amount of money, we'll just start that hiring process and the turnover savings and everything else. Because I don't, we talked about the fact, I would like to see if we can't get to the two grade eight teachers in April because I'm not hiring two grade eight teachers in September. So this has to be done priority-wise right away. And if it doesn't happen, meaning Minute Man goes up, or we have to have two buses, then it's not, as I said before, this is not essential. It would be great, but it is, you know, Donna doesn't, didn't advocate it as being the most important thing. But certainly, I think it would be a fantastic addition to be able to have those two eighth-grade teachers. Or some, some scheduling of two teachers to impact class size.
So what would happen with those two teachers? I assume that's for a bubble. So is that necessary?
So it, right, well, that's part of the reason why it's not necessarily a number-one priority. But I, if you look at, again, why it's handy to have the enrollment, you know, our, our, right now, our current sixth-grade numbers and even our seventh-grade numbers, you know, meaning our current fifth going into sixth and our current sixth going into seventh, you know, they're not, they're not small. So I don't think that it's a wasted resource, meaning it's never a wasted resource. I don't, I think anticipating the future, I think bringing back the half-team, which we had in the past, will be beneficial. So I don't think we're going to hire two people and then let them go, if that's kind of the thought, no.
And, and even though we can't save right now, I mean, there'll be attrition as well. And so if we have additional retirements and we decide that.
Yeah.
We're at a point where we don't need to fill the other retirement, and this person just really is taking that place, then we would reduce a position if that were appropriate. And, and the people that are hired wouldn't be affected, impacted, yeah.
Yeah, so, and, sorry, not to just keep going on this, but the, the other, that's why I said about, I wouldn't necessarily call them grade eight teachers, which maybe by the time we do the public hearing, I might change that just to middle school teachers.
Yeah.
Because in keeping them, you know, scheduling-wise, Donna could go from a four-person team and add an additional section of math or ELA in each of the grade levels. So they might teach two preps instead of just one. So I just want to keep that very open, and I do think it's, it is needed. And I said before, the drama teacher actually, and I think we'll change that in this, no matter what, next year will be a .2 increase. Because there, I mean, we can't sustain going from two drama classes to 10. We don't have the students that are going to be able to populate those classes. So I think it's much better to progressively add the drama teacher. So that's where we would go with drama.
Point, so do a .2 every year for the next couple of years?
Yeah.
And, because, like, looking at the program of studies, that we.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
I think some sense.
Yeah, I think leaving it as a grade eight puts this sort of like undue pressure. Like, is there like this major problem in grade eight?
Yes.
I think that sort of encourages this conversation that's not actually in this situation.
Yep, so we will call it a middle school teachers, too.
And do a .2 for that drama teacher.
Yep, careful.
And everything as I go.
No wiping of.
Oh. He's got broke the, oh, yeah, it was an eruption.
Level services?
Add it to level services, we need this basket.
That's right.
Just joking.
And that includes the candy that goes in?
Of course. So the next slide is just, it's similar to the others. It doesn't really change anything. It's just showing it a different way and showing it by object code rather than cost center. Just another way to look at it. And as you can see, the priorities for the positions that were already approved by, by the committee have now been added in into their own column, and that ties us out to our full budget of the 52,963,495. And you'll see that that's a 5% increases matching the town's guidance. And then, per pupil spending, I don't really speak to that typically, but it's in there for you.
For you, sir.
Not if it's been law.
I know.
Yeah.
It's noted, so.
Yes. So it's, it's in there for your, and the public's information.
Yep, and just, this is probably a good moment, not to belabor a point, but as we all know with the Student Opportunity Act, the, the state has increased Chapter 70 funding. It's not equal or proportioned across the state. It's based on individual districts and need. And we are, we haven't met the threshold of getting more than an additional $30 per student. So our increase in Chapter 70 is around $84,000. But this right here shows that we are far above the net school spending requirements. And I mean, we're like 88% above. Our net school spending is about 182% of what we're, I mean, it's, we are spending far more because we can, which is great and fabulous, based on looking at this chart. And what that means is the allocation that the, the town has given us, the 5%, would include any increases to the Chapter 70 charity sheet funding that we get from the state. So we, and Teresa will speak a little bit in a future curriculum subcommittee meeting, we, we think of $84,000 of our budget as part of the SOA, the Student Opportunity Act, and we are going to really target the coaching and some of the TLA professional development to show the state what we're doing with the funding. Because it's evidence-based, it's definitely targeted to increasing achievement gaps. So it's perfectly aligned to what they're looking for, and that's what we're going to describe as how we're going to use our, our budget. But this, this town has been far more generous and above anything that the state would ever require for spending. So we're very, very thankful.
So I mean, just looking at this chart, the one that stands out the most is what we, what we spend on teachers. I mean, that's, that's by far the highest, the biggest difference.
And Cambridge is more, right.
And I assume that's because of low class sizes, but are there other things that are, go into that calculation?
Well, our co-teaching model.
Yeah, it's, yes. Low class size, co-teaching.
The number of specialized programs?
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah.
Just trying to think.
Services, staff, like counseling and mental health support.
Coaching, I mean.
Yeah, coaching.
Digital learning support specialists. I mean, I, I don't know, I'm not, in abundance of speech and language pathologists and occupational therapists and.
These schools that are up here, are those DARTs from the department that are just, which, why, what are the.
I've compiled them from DART or from radar.
I see, those aren't usually our DARTs, right?
Yeah, there's some of them that are DARTs, Gloucester, Dedham.
Dedham is for sure. I'm, if, I don't remember if I'm the one that created the list, because I did it a couple of years ago. It could have been based on neighbors and DART.
That's what it looks like.
So.
Okay, I was just curious, because like I did write.
Well, yeah, because Waltham's not in our DART, but they're a neighbor.
No, Belmont's not either.
Neighbors and DARTs.
Okay.
But I think it's, I mean, people think of us as being like our neighbors, but we're, we're not like our neighbors in either, in either direction, Cambridge or Belmont. It's more like Waltham went all said and done, but still.
I mean, I think there's a, there's a trend that a lot of people don't understand, too, is that a lot of districts that are viewed publicly as extremely high-performing spend very little per student. And that those numbers do not take into account individual family contributions for a child's public education and what they pay for in programming outside of school. And so in those kind of programs in extracurricular academics are a really big part of culture in those towns that you can't quantify in the Department of Ed spending data.
I think that's a lot that probably could have been.
We could, but I'm just saying, like, it does something people don't, don't realize of why, one of the reasons why some very high-performing districts have these numbers.
Yeah, if you pulled up comparative, you know, demographic data, again, and not just the things you can't quantify, but even if you look at demographics, it's completely different. So, which then one can make.
Yes.
Further extrapolations of.
It's, 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 it's very naked and crude for people to consider just the dollar amount that you spend on kids, nothing else but the tax.
But it's true. Like, I like this line, but I'm just saying what it is. When people talk, when people talk about schools, they're going, what you spend, it's, it's not all informed to talk right about.
And, and you don't measure the success of a school based upon your MCAS results. Meaning, you know, if we talk about mental health and we talk about, you know, career technical education, we talk about other things that are not MCAS, you know, I think our programming is just far more robust across the board for our students. And it's, it's something to be very proud of, but it doesn't, again, doesn't show up in the, you know, well, you know, MCAS performance. Belmont's does better than Watertown. Well, they do, but they spend less, but they do. But let's talk about all of it in terms of how we take care of our kids. And it is completely different because they are pretty bare bones, hate to say it Belmont, but, you know, coaches and curriculum support and mental health support and everything else because it might not be as necessary.
This is just, this slide, oh, I'm sorry, we forgot to take a note of there. Well.
In fact, with Jim.
Yeah, anyway. So again, we, we put in, and this was confirmed, she just forgot to take the note of, that we, you know, just put in how much we're getting and in, and over the year, what the trend has been. Certain things have risen, other things decrease. One of the, one of the grants, sorry, this is really small print for me. As you can see, a couple of things have disappeared over the, especially down the bottom. But the project Lead the Way, I mean, over the years, things have decreased. And so obviously, as those things occur, they are made up if there are things that we have to replace out of, out of the budget. So we do have a small amount with Project Lead the Way embedded into the operating next year that has not been embedded in the past because they expect the grant to be less next year, so. And we don't have the numbers yet, obviously, we don't find out this early. This is the budget offsets that we have every year, just meaning that there are a number of things that we put into the operating budget, but then it's funded by different, whether it's Circuit Breaker or revolving funds. It's not coming from taxpayers, it's not coming from the 5% from the town, but it's first shown in the operating so that everyone can see that this is what it really costs to run all these programs and run the district. And if all of those, all of the staff and all the programming was paid completely through real estate tax, local real estate tax, all of these offsets, additional money is needed from local taxation to deliver all the services that we are. And so I'll just point out, on the Circuit Breaker, it's not a huge dip, but there is a dip there, and that is based on what our actual eligible out-of-district costs were in the prior year. They, they, the DESI and the state reimburses a percentage and the percentage actually fluctuates. It could be different percentages depending on the state's budget. So they first audit eligible costs and then you have to meet their, you know, forty-eight thousand minimum debt the local taxpayers have to contribute towards each student for their out of district, that's automatic. And then anything above that is generally eligible cost, so that they do audit and make sure that all the costs that you're claiming are eligible costs. Once they do that, or they audit here and they have it other than that, you put it in, all the districts put in. And the state has whatever they put into the budget to allocate and they wait for. Sorry, that's what I just. What happens, so just so you know, at the end of twenty, July, Kathy Damaris and her team have put together the circuit breaker claim, the whole state has to have it in in July. Around September is when the DESI has taken the whole state and figured out, this is what we have in the budget. Here's every percentage rate. So, you know, they'll say, here's what, they don't know what everybody's going to pay, so it's July. Then they will spend, you know, the later half of July, through August, to say, here's what we put aside in the state budget. Here's what all the claims were, it's a simple calculation. Here's, here's, here's what the percentage ends up being. Last year, I think it was, they were at seventy-five percent, and I personally have not ever seen that. But I have seen it go as low as, you know, sixty-five percent and years ago, it went even lower than that. But it really just, the percentage isn't upfront, because they don't know what the claim will be. The percentage is the result of all the claims. It has been better funded in the last year and a half, so a year or two. So what we do is whatever we received last year, it was what we use this year. And whatever we, DESI has already put out preliminary, they put it out at the beginning of the year, what, here's what Watertown should get this year, that's the amount we budget for the offset next year. Most years, in the fourth quarter, they give you a little bump. They say, okay, everybody's settled, we have a little bit of money that they sort of put aside at the beginning of the year, and now we'll reallocate that out for a little bit extra bump for all the districts. So we budget what they have said they are going to send us this year. So that's, that's a difference there.
Any other questions, curious about? I, because I, I know that it's really great that we're able to do this one-year delay, like we're allowed to do that. I'm just curious, like, do you have any sense of, like, how these school districts are able to do that? Because I think it's something that like, the school district and the town should be proud of, of being able to. And I was kind of curious how a lot of that situation actually occurs.
I don't know how many are doing that, there are certainly many districts who would never be able to.
Yeah.
However, many districts are striving to get there. So we just did that over the last couple of years and a little bit each year until we got there.
It's like a stability thing, right, that you can plan a little bit?
Well, so just so everybody's up, this is what happened, and I'll just say for my prior district, this is exactly what happened. We had to budget what we, in that year, what we were receiving that year. So you're guessing, I'm just going to say in December, January. Three things. So at that point, you have no idea what your spend cost will be next year. So you're saying, here's all the placements right now, assuming inflation, assuming nobody else moves into the district or we don't identify any more children who do placements, this is what the spend budget would look like. That's one assumption that you have to make, an estimate. Then you're estimating what will your eligible cost be at the end of the year, and here's what we think the claim will be. And then you have no idea what the percentage will be that the state gives you. So to, so it's, it's so risky to budget an amount for the next year that you think you're going to get in the next year, over four quarters, that you've already budgeted, spend the money, and you're not even getting it until the end of that next year. In my last district, and it happened to everybody, the state put out that they were going to reimburse sixty-five percent. Everybody had already built their budget, you're finding out in September. In my last district, that gave us an eight-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand dollar drop in our budget that we were already living in that budget. It was in September, and we were already there.
Many districts.
And we were going to have to look at cutting people all of a sudden. So.
Or like one kid moves in with an expensive out of state placement, it does the same.
If they have to go to an out of state placement, you're talking three hundred thousand for that replacement. So, and things can fluctuate, a collaborative, it might be fifty thousand, it's a wild swings, and it's all depending on that student's needs and the best place for them to be, which the team makes that decision. But the only thing that we sort of lucked out on, in that district, we had to go back to town meeting, that was the town meeting for the next year, and they gave us an extra appropriation of seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand because it was a town that could do that. Any, a lot of other places did be cut south.
Well, we also have the stabilization.
Right, no, I'm just saying, like, I think it's something that, like, I know we talked about it last year, we got to this point, everything is a real point in practice that we can be that conservative about how we're planning for it, it's good, so things good to talk about.
It's a major benefit to being in this position if we ever come to a place where we need to be, or we need additional funding. You know, you can build your budget off it, but it's just, as Heidi said, risky and not the preferred way to do it. So, but if you had to, you could. But I think we are in a great place and we are not in a, in a position to need that right now, so.
And the state, you know, obviously nine C cuts, and those are usually around January or February. The state right now, you know, economy's great, but when, I've been through a couple, well, a couple of nine C cuts where the governor will have to go through their budget and cut the state's budget mid-year. They typically don't touch circuit breaker, but they can touch a lot of your other types of funding. We don't have Metco and we don't have regional transportation, some of those things, they, they cut, those are the first things that get cut. So, you know, this is, it's too much money, it's very risky. And just so everybody at home knows, you have one year to use it, so we can't do any more than what we're doing, and it's perfect, it's just right. But it also lets us know when we're building the budget, exactly how much to build. And unless they ever cut this, and I can't see that they ever would, they're trying to go the other way with it, then we are pretty secure in that we will have that money as something that we've already planned on to build the budget with. And again, there'll probably be a small bump at the end of fourth quarter, it's not usually much, but it's, you know, a little something. And we do immediately use that in the following year. So I just wanted to point that out, the last thing that I'll specifically hone in on, the foundation reserve aid of a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand. The district, if anybody was here last year, or people at home are listening last year, this was brought up then too. The representative Hekt has advocated on behalf of Watertown. And this is only for, frankly, it only ends up being Watertown and Holyoke that get this aid in the state budget. It is for districts that have very expensive schools in their town and meet a couple of other qualifiers.
And REPLA. Trump loan also.
Oh, okay, I don't, I don't know. But I don't know all the people, but Representative Hekt is the one that gets in touch and puts it, you know, puts it, tries to get it into the budget. So he did say, however, that this is probably the last year of it, because with the Student Opportunity Act, this state is already putting a lot of money in for all districts in another way. So I'm sure it'll, you know, not be off the radar to consider, but he did say upfront, this is probably the last year we're getting it. So we also went a year or so ago to using that one year behind for the same reason as everything else, where we didn't know when it was going to end. So it is an offset built into next year's budget, but next year we may lose that, that might be the last year we have that offset. So just wanted to bring that up so people have in mind that there's other changes that may occur next year that will affect some of these offsets. So we always put in the fees, they have not changed. We just have the note in there that the two-year pilot was in effect this year and will be for next year for middle school, that students can pay a flat fifty dollars to be in as many sports as they want, excuse me, as well as any of the clubs that they want, or extracurricular, it's all combined in the one-fifty-dollar fee. We won't know until the year ends, you know, sort of where that landed. But the high school has remained the same and the transportation has remained the same. And then go back to Dee Dee, for her budget.
I just have a few quick items to share. I think when we think about the FY twenty significant accomplishments, so I can talk about everything we've done, but I'll just talk about my little piece of this. And then throughout the course of the next two nights, you will hear really in-depth about what we're doing in terms of curriculum programs in schools. So for me, in my small little corner of the district, the ongoing implementation of the four-year district improvement strategy, completing the educational program document for the Watertown High School feasibility study, which was huge, beginning the process of packing and moving the kind of the Hosmer, and then planning for the move, the early steps preschool here. So next year, at this point in time, there'll be cute, small children in this room, not us. And then the several, successful hiring of several key administrative positions, including the Watertown High School principal. So it's been a pretty active year, but I think what you'll hear in the next several nights, we'll show you a little bit more about what we're doing. And then in terms of drivers that are directly related to my departments, the communications strategist is definitely coming straight out of central services. The part-time human resources assistant, which we spoke about in the past, and it's one of the priorities. This is essential for the effective running of our HR department. The continued PD and administrators, so that is something that we do during our leadership retreats and throughout the course of the year. Compensation for Watertown Public School staff, that's lane changes, retirements, resignations, and new hire variances. And then contracted services and, which I could add the survey here too, but to support the district-wide initiatives. So we have partnered with the chapter seventy-four programs, the multi-tier systems of support, and other various things that we do from my office that are related to the effective functioning of the district. So we're now going to move on, I'm going to ask the indulgence of the subcommittee and Dr. Teresa McGinnis to see if I could move up Lori's presentation, just about the Department of Public Buildings. Lori and myself have holes to get to, to make sure we vote, so.
Yeah, you do.
I think Teresa might have voted, I'm not, yes, I know, I don't have my, that's how you tell, I don't have my sticker, so. Lori, you want to come on up?
Yeah.
But just tell me what's, what number is.
We're getting there.
Sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven. We're getting there, sixty-seven.
No, I don't have, I don't know if I have numbers, I just have pages. Oh, I need it, thank you.
It's the second to last page.
Hi, thank you for letting me bump ahead of a few people. On this first page is my, the department's accomplishments that we did this, this year. And I can say this is just a bleeping time, we've been very, very busy. I don't want to go through every single one of these, I just want to kind of highlight a few of those. But if there's any other particular ones that you want me to address, please let me know. I can say the first one has really been on everybody's radar, and that is just getting ready for the building for the future. There's been a lot of things that have been happening, and especially, I'd say, the last six months with a lot of moves, internal, external, everything. You are all aware of that, I won't, I won't go into that. I'm still developing my department, and I think we're still trying to figure out where, you know, where it's going, what is it going to be? What is it going to look like? And part of that, that you'll see later in my goals for next year, as you know, the budget, and how is that going to merge? And how is that merging with the town? So I think this is going to still be a department that is going to be developing for the next couple of years. I think we move forward every single year, but it's still, it's still not quite there yet. You know, one of the big things we started doing is water sampling in our schools, you know. The EPA changed some of its rules this year, so it used to be that there was a, there was an action level. There's still an action level line, but they've said that no lead is good. And so although there's an action level line that we have to immediately do, we're really looking, if there's any lead, we got to have a plan for it. Now, I can tell you, my plan is that first bullet up there that has changed some of these schools and take them down. But we are going through and we are making sure that we're complying for schools that we are not renovating. We are making sure that we look at that and address any of those issues. So extra random testing for that is helping with that. If you just kind of like switch really to the right side, because that is all stuff that has kind of happened recently. We just basically went out for another MSBA application to get boilers at our middle school. So we're hoping to hear about that in the, probably the next month or two, and hopefully we'll get some on that. Our capital plan this year was, was very big, we had nine-hundred-and-thirty K that we're working. And then we had seven-hundred-and-fifty-three K of money at the end of fiscal year that we ended up throwing in. So I tend to say we got two capital plans that we did in FY nineteen. It's one of the greatest problems I've ever had, you know, to try and, try and marry and merge and figure out when we're doing this. And so that was definitely a good thing. And then, you know, we did work orders. If you kind of look, you know, it started last year, really starting, putting our, compiling our work orders and bringing those together. And you see that really our work orders that came into our system were really about the same as last year. Kind of seems that it's hovering around that, that, that twelve-hundred kind of thing. But we did a little, few extra work orders this year than we did last year. So at least we're on track. Now, again, I just want to say that not every work order is equal, some work orders take a couple of minutes, some work orders take months to do. So we have to take this back with a grain of salt, but it kind of gives us an idea of where we're at. So these are just some of our highlights, if anybody has any questions about any of the other ones on the sheet, I can. So my goals, again, is can you continue with the building for the future? That will probably continue again for the next couple of years. I would, I personally want to start an education email that goes out. And I tried to start doing them, this was actually one of my goals for last year. Kind of got put on the side because I'm struggling with who my target audience is. And do I want my target audience to be teachers, or do I want my target audience to be students? And there are, it's two different, two different ways of looking at it, and I then kind of got lost and shuffled. But either way, I want to start doing that, I want to get out and kind of saying some things like, when it is hot in the room, your idea shouldn't first be to open the window, it should be to check your thermostat, you know? And certain things like that, who we all know is common sense, but it's not something that we think. And so it's seasonal newsletters that would kind of go out. So something I'm just kind of formulating, but I haven't really solidified that yet. I already mentioned about merging, merging town, school and the funds, and how that is all going to work for everybody. I am proposing two-point-seven million dollars of capital plan work. So that is again, another large chunk of money that will mostly be in the middle school. And our hero reports are up, and so we have to do those every three years. So my plan currently right now is to work on that this summer. And again, this is just like a summary slide, this doesn't change too much year to year. It kind of just kind of shows where a lot of our, where, well, it shows exactly where the money is going.
And two quick things.
Sure.
One is, we're so lucky to have you. So thank you so much, you are just a huge asset for this district and so important even normal times in here, we're in not normal times in terms of forgetting, and I just, I'm so thankful that you're here, so thank you. And the other thing was the news email, I love that idea. But I think I would target teachers first and start there and see how it goes, and then maybe branch out to students after.
We think especially because even in a teacher newsletter, you can have one section that says, share with students. You know, it could be like a couple of things you could share with students, like how the building works, what they can.
Yeah, just need things.
Anyways, just.
Thank you, thank you.
Communication strategist could also help.
Right.
Just saying.
Right, that is.
All right, go vote.
I'm just going to say, if you don't mind, I just want to add, on the facilities budget, and you'll see the large part of it is utilities. The town puts out specific guidance about the utilities budget across the town, that it's five percent, has to be what's built in for an inflation factor or cost. We don't have any say in that as far as the increase. So within Lori's, when we say two percent, she's going to have that anomaly for a very large portion of her budget. So when it looks like two percent, it's not going to show two percent for her overall budget. So when you see that on the other slides, I just wanted to point that out, that that's driven from town hall.
Thank you, has anyone else?
And can I just add one thing before you leave to echo what Kendra said? I know that the building principals are so thankful for the communications that are given very frequently for their buildings. It keeps them on top of everything with their teachers. So even though you haven't written into the teachers, you've written into the principals and they have shared that information. And with the building of the four new schools, you know, I watched Dr. Galston and admire the work that she's doing, but it's, you do such an integral part of that too, in terms of the building committees. And so I echo Kendra's appreciation of your efforts.
Thank you, thanks a lot, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, I'm going to vote. George, can we also have George, since he has two slides and he treated that so.
Thanks. So I'll be relatively quick. So my Lori, it was a bit hard to sort of focus the accomplishments on everything that we're doing. So I chose more costly upgrades, which actually might not be, in some cases, the most impactful or most visible, but they're the ones that keep our network running and keep everything going. So we've upgraded our district internet connection from five-hundred megabits to one gigabit through RCN. We're still working with the town to decommission the old feed, which should be completing that within the next month. That's really just to ensure that everyone can get on the network and get what they need, specifically around MCAS and also just digital presentations, video of like. Installed a new storage array, has increased the number of servers in the district and increased the number of users connected to servers. We're reaching the max capacity of our storage array, which is what all the servers run on. It was also six years old, so it was time to refresh it. So the new server array is installed, some of the new servers are running on that and some of them are running on the old. Eventually, the old array will move to a backup scenario, probably at the Hosmer or elsewhere. Right now, they're both running side by side. One-to-one Chromebooks, you'll see this year to year at this point, will refresh the grade six and nine Chromebooks to maintain our one-to-ones, so the sixth grade students keep the Chromebooks for all of middle school, the ninth grade students keep them for all of high school, and then the outgoing eighth grade and twelfth grade Chromebooks. Fifty to seventy-five percent of them remain usable for another year, those go to the elementary and supplement the elementary use. Within the department, we supported IREDA and MCAS assessments. Though those aren't, that responsibility isn't solely within our department, it's sort of an all-hands-on-deck scenario, so we support that for the duration of the assessments. Enabled online demographic and contact updates. So power score registration, we rolled out full this year for K. So Power School registration, we rolled out full, um, this year for K through twelve, whereas last year it was only for incoming K. So we had, I think, sixty percent response overall. We hope to increase that next year for parents to upgrade, to update their contact information, uh, email addresses, phone numbers, everything except their, um, mailing, their home address, because that requires a change of registration.
So you're at sixty percent?
Sixty percent of families responded. So, and I have been broken that down into what that would mean for individual students, but, yeah, I don't know whether, number of student response, individual student responses is slightly higher or lower, but family responses were around sixty percent.
Okay, so are we going to be able to, how are we going to get the rest of those families to respond?
So I, I think that since, you remember, we launched this, um, after the school year began?
Yes.
Um, so moving forward in the next year, it's going to be right when you get all your stuff in August? Um, so I think that'll be a whole different level of, oh, I think people thought this was extra or additional, or it wasn't part of the.
It should be two reminders.
Exactly. So that's it. And then we'll have back, if we can catch people back to school night, I mean, it's just a whole different way to, um, to tackle it. And I, I mean, I think even, I mean, I know sixty percent might not be what we had originally hoped for, but at least, given the fact that people didn't know the, the real need or why this is so important, because it was a little bit later, that's still pretty good. So, um, we'll get them all.
And that position, the Power School administrative position, has been sort of revolving the door over the past, like, five years. We've had three people in that position. Um, the implementation was bumpy, moving from, um, full online registration for kindergartners to the returning student forms. So we hope for, starting earlier, um, not duplicating paper forms, and a better, also increase response rates. Um, increased power future per grade book usage, you'll see that again year over year. Um, that's going to feed into one of the goals for the coming year, which is opening up the parent portal. Um, part of that is also, um, enabling additional rostering of students for ELL and activities. What we're going with that is that there are certain, um, groups have traditionally been sort of, um, pull-out services within the classroom, like, uh, ELL, um, um, special ed, where they don't have, um, defined rosters or defined case loads in Power School. We're moving towards defining ca- ca- case loads and rosters in Power School for those teachers, so that they can then see their students within Power School directly and respond to them.
They can't see them in Power School?
You can, but right now it's through an administrative portal. So they, they have a different way of accessing the students, and it's not quite as targeted. So this allows for more targeting, as we're moving forward with having, um, elementary assessment data. So, um, ELL teachers will have, ELL students will have a addendum to the report card that has ELL standards on it. In order to grade those students on those standards for that ELL addendum to the report card, they need to have rosters. So it's moving in that direction, so the teacher, so that then we can also push that visibility out, so that we can say that, well, this ELL teacher has these twenty kids, and they can then see those students both in Power School and IREDDI and all the systems that will link back to Power School. Um, so the teacher-student mapping is, is a little bit more granular.
And then what, what more parents will be able to see it? Like, when we have a parent.
So the, right. So the, and, and the parent portal is technically actually open, especially at the secondary level, but it's the assignment level opening that we keep focusing on. Yes, yes. So we have a, a plan that we're launching tomorrow at our faculty meetings to do a, a, and I think it makes all the sense in the world to open the assignments, um, but have it be for the first year of pilot. So we're going to go to the, um, schools tomorrow and let people know that in September, um, assignments, the assignment level data will be open. You have to purposely make it private if you don't want to be part of the pilot, but, um, we think people will do both. Meaning, I think some people will just use it and not want to be part of the pilot, meaning not go to meetings and give feedback, but, and others will be pro- actively part of it to determine in the following year, you know, what are the expectations, the parameters? What do we find that's easy, what do we find that is difficult? There's just a lot of unknown for teachers, and I think that, you know, not mandating, like, everybody must do this, unless work through what the unknowns are like for some people, we'll go along with it. So that's what we're going to do.
So not an extra for the year after, our parent will have to be able to go online and be like, oh, I know we had a science test, and here's the, here's the quiz grade or whatever.
Yep.
They're starting to see that next year, during the pilot.
Yep.
Realize it's two parts. There's sort of assignment data that is through the parent portal, and then there's the assessment data, which is more around design standards to store things like Funtan's and Fennel for elementary, or, um, Wida for ELL, which is what the rostering is for.
Do they have to do some training of parents?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, 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 yes.
And, yeah. Just using me as a template, I, I don't use it.
You'll be, you'll be the, well, yes.
I'll do your pilot.
Thank you.
Okay.
You're the parent pilot. So.
So then on the next slide. Thank you again, my Lori, the first goal is really to support the building for the future. Um, most of the items in my, uh, in my budget request, the IT budget request, are more what we need to run the district on a day-to-day basis for IT, but most of the time spent, and what we're hoping is, there'll be a bunch of additional work through Building for the Future. So this year, coming up, building the Conif- the Conifwest network, uh, that's what we're working on now, and now continuing through the summer. Hosmer's consolidation into the Z-shaped building will take considerable time. Probably steps moved to here, or reach out to move to here. Once the walls are built and the wires are in, we'll then get provision at network. Um, apartment public buildings move to Main Street, that's going to be.
Where are they on?
Main Street. The dance studio.
Behind Dinner Street.
Get out.
Yeah, what a good spot.
You should dance there.
Yes.
So.
Now you can go get, you know, black hair. See Lori.
That's great, I had no idea.
So similar to the Conifwest network, um, outfitting, that's going to be a lighter, but still have you left. We're talking about ten administrative workers all being online to network and connection and location. It's not as dedicated town building. Um, and then individual staff moves, um, as you make room for growing steps here, people are moving elsewhere and taking their phones with them and all that required, um, coordination. So that's really a, a busy summer into fall, and there'll probably be some bumps along the way, but that's going to be time-consuming. Um, except work with district and school-level administration to reintroduce Power School parent portal. So that's what we're just talking about.
Yep.
Um, redesigned segments of the data and voice networks to increase resiliency. That's part of the Building for the Future project, but it's more than that. Um, so taking the opportunity to really look at what some of the sort of single points of failure are within the network and address them. Um, decouple some of the phone network and the data network to ensure that we don't have sort of critical failure. Um, we're working with the town on that to, um, replace the phone systems as part of the ongoing project. Um, and then the last one, continued integration of systems, and that's really, so we have the two storage arrays. Moving remaining virtual servers from one storage array to another, that'll speed up the overall performance. And then give us some backup. There's a lot more that we're doing, um, as far as, you know, we just, but, but one of the other stuff isn't, doesn't have a dedicated line item. It's things that we just do as part of our day-to-day work.
Okay.
And not that we need to talk about this right now, but a foreshadowing of the future is probably in the next budget building, we'll be looking for additional tech support, just because as we move into the new buildings, we're going to need to have more FTE overseeing our buildings and, and the move, and, and then making sure we're, so just giving you a foreshadowing.
Right now, we have two technicians, uh, computer slash network technicians. One, um, uh, computer support specialist, which really is a network slash server administrator. And then data systems administrator, which is our Power School, uh, support person, and myself. My hope would be in the future budget that we look at breaking up the computer special, uh, support specialist into a network administrator and a server administrator. So that's really what we need going forward, it's very tight right now, especially with the French backs.
Cool. Thank you, George.
Thank you so much, we know you, your work is sometimes invisible and only noted when something goes wrong. So just saying, we really appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you.
And are happy that things are going well.
Thank you, George.
Two seconds. It's actually fully going to Teresa. Yeah, I just wanted to, um, before Teresa moved off our slides, I just, I had said earlier, I would start to stack on one or two things that I wanted to point out back on the other side. Back on, like, um, slide fifteen, which is the total preliminary, I wanted to point out that the one hundred and fifty thousand dollar offset for utilities was inadvertently included last year under regular day and should have been in the facilities budget. So while it appears, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't affect anything, but while it appears that the facility's budget went up one percent, it's actually four point three percent from last year to this year. And the regular day appears on the initial slide at seven point four, and it actually went up six point seven. So that's just a swap of that offset that we caught late, that was in last year's, and it's correct, it's for twenty-one. It's just, um, it's a coding thing that happened last year that it went into regular day. Um, I mentioned before, but for people who haven't seen it, the decrease in the district, um, a lot of that was moving the salaries down out of the district line as the unit A was settled and they not aligned the pay, and we moved them down into where they belong. Um, so just wanted to point out just a couple of things. And then the decrease in extracurricular, um, the high school principal in her budget decreased the, and she wasn't using it. That's why she reallocated it. She did decrease, um, eight thousand dollars in salaries in that line and reallocated somewhere else. It had been excess in that line in prior years anyways, and a little bit in supply, so the stuff that she didn't need. So that is a true decrease based on the high school principals, um, you know, really looking at her budget and, and moving things around. Um, so it's not really, um, I would also say the other decrease specifically in district salary, eighty-three thousand of that, um, was at the time when we first did, um, the budget, was for some special education aids that we didn't know exactly where we would need them yet, depending on the students that we had them. And now that's been moved down into the actual school where they are. So it didn't change the, um, budget in any way, it just moved it to a different line once we knew who we were hiring and what school they were in. So, uh, I just wanted to point out a couple of things on, and other than that. Ready to go, I'm, I'm sorry. Let me find out the number I want to.
Slide thirty-one.
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one, okay. Put that in backwards to address those. For the next two meetings, we've sort of just only put the slides in that are applicable to those nights, only the first night we do the bowl.
We need to be there by eight. So, I need to leave by seven.
Okay. All right.
Look at this.
So I have the pleasure of talking about everything, curriculum, instruction, professional development, assessment, um, which is the fun stuff. Um, the first two slides are accomplishments, the next two are goals. Um, and then there's a little bit of a sample looking at what IREDDI looks like for an overview, and then finally, professional development. So, um, under accomplishments, our two thousand nineteen advanced placement test results show eighty-four percent scoring three or higher, and twenty-eight percent of our students scoring a perfect five, which is the top score. Um, all K to eight teachers, um, have worked with instructional coach on one or more of the following in their collaborative data, data meetings, co-planning, co-teaching, and within a formal coaching cycle. And last year, we had written that as K to five, this year it's K to eight, because we added coaches at the middle school. Um, implementation of professional development around our SEL curriculum, responsive classroom, uh, K to eight. Responsive advisory is in six, seven, eight, and Donna will speak just a little bit more about that when she presents on the twelfth. Maybe, so that maybe she's on the seventeenth, actually. Um, in, we established school-based SEL leadership teams at all five schools. Um, and, uh, the, almost a hundred percent of, I should say, elementary and middle school staff participated in full day or more of SEL PD. Hosmer School always designated a school of distinction because of its high growth on MCAS assessments. Um, and then based on our last three years of strategic planning, um, a really significant student achievement measurement that MCAS revealed is, um, the third grade cohort students across all three elementary schools, if you took that cohort from two thousand seventeen to two thousand nineteen, their ELA scores increased twenty-three percent, and their math scores increased fifteen percent in meeting or exceeding expectations in MCAS. Those are remarkable numbers, um, and they're a testament to what I've written there as strategic planning, but what you all know from all of the meetings you've been at and from the budgets that you have supported in the last three years. That has to do with a universal assessment tool, IREDDI, as you do with coaching, um, the advent of coaching over the three years, adding coaches. Uh, most importantly, it's the teachers on the front line, but it's the curriculum mapping we've done. The curriculum coordinators have led the work with groups of teachers, so that our, our curriculum is aligned to the standards much better than it has been in the past, and that really shows it, so it's a fun number to look at.
And can I just, yeah, please do.
Yeah.
So this is just third grade.
Mm-hmm.
It's from seventeen to nineteen, twenty-three percent more students never exceeded in ELA.
Yep.
And fifteen percent more students never exceeded.
Yes. Oh, but, that's not more, it's the same students.
It's a cohort. So from where they started to thirty-fifth.
Thirty-fifth.
Yeah, third to fifth. So if you, yeah, when I showed the MCAS slides, I showed this, but I showed it in a color that went like this with a line through.
Cohort.
Yeah.
Third, fourth, and fifth grade.
Exactly.
Gotcha.
Yep, yep. And that's eight, oh, that, I should say, while the state, that same cohort of third graders from two thousand seventeen was still at the fifty percent mark, they didn't increase like that. So that's showing huge, huge increase. Um, and then we're year two implementation of Lucy Coughlin's units of study, um, which is evidence-based, research-based, um, into the middle school as well. Our coaches are supporting that, as well as Deva Har, our K to eight literacy coordinator. Um, we have our TLA, which is our consultants we've been using now, into the third year there. They're also supporting that work at the middle school. So what we're doing is taking the high-leverage, successful, evidence-based, um, planning that we've done and has been successful at the elementary, moving it to the middle school. Um, implementation of FLES up to grade three this year. Uh, next year, as we've shown in an earlier slide, it will be grades four to five. Um, a really important, um, part for our EL students, our English learners, is creating sheltered social studies at the middle school for students with limited or interrupted formal education into these, these special math classes to meet the needs of our EL students. And that's one of the, um, steps in our turnaround plan for the middle school as well, just to meet that need of a, a student group that, um, uh, needs more attention from, from us. We expanded technology, um, of course, uh, one-to-one Chromebook access in grades two to five, and then more iPads for K to one. We moved the vision, as DeeDee, uh, Dr. Galston had in her earlier one, um, from the new high school, from the eligibility phase to the feasibility phase with MSBA. Uh, year, year two full implementation in K to five, and then first year pretty much in K, in six through eight, of the IREDDI online universal assessment tool for diagnostic assessment, progress monitoring, and intervention. Um, it's K to eight for, three times a year for our progress monitoring, and the ninth grade is beginning of year and end of year. Uh, so we don't have, I don't have a slide on that in just a moment. Uh, we established, um, regular collaborative inquiry needs, which we used to call data meetings, but really collaborative inquiry is much more important, because it's not just looking at data, it's looking at it with a, a lens of inquiry. So we're getting targeted down to the student level, personalizing the instruction that's needed. Um, all teachers are looking at students across the grade level, um, as well as their own. So it's a much more broad and deep look at the data. Um, it's led by our, our coaches, um, and the grade level teams, K through eight. Um, supporting math instructions, um, I wrote it twice, so we're going to knock one of those out for the formal meeting to the school committee. But, um, basically, we've, um, hired consultants from Harvard, uh, for NQI, which is the Mathematics Quality of Instruction Coaching Institute, to work closely with our sixth grade. We looked at data and realized we needed to, one, align our curriculum better, uh, because it wasn't aligned well enough to the math standards. And two, uh, we wanted to make sure that we were diversifying or differentiating our instructions better. And so we, um, these coaches have come to the middle school and worked closely with our sixth grade math teachers. And now there's some online component, there's some, uh, peer observation and some filming of lessons. So it's really deep and detailed, and it's going to continue, um, the rest of, until June. And, um, Elizabeth Kaplan, our K to eight math coordinator, is working closely with that group as well. So, um, that's part of, a, part of a bigger picture plan.
But those coaches aren't doing, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
They're not doing. They're not doing, I don't like our curriculum alignment.
No, the curriculum alignment is done in, in districts. Yep.
Okay, and have they shifted their curriculum that they're using or is it missing something?
They, no, they have, they, so they use multiple things. One is MCAS in the fall when we realized we're missing some standards. So as they're developing the units and putting them into Atlas, our curriculum management tool, they're making modifications. What's missing, what does the data show if there's a geometry strand that we're not meeting, et cetera?
So are they shifting what they're teaching in the meantime?
Yes.
Are they just going to add this to?
They are shifting, it's small shifts, and it's the biggest bag for the buck, meaning the area where we missed, which is very clear in data. Mm-hmm, yep, we're adding into it. Yep.
And that will be timed too? Are you ready to stop? Please stop. I'm sorry.
I'm wasting my time.
Oh, I mean, like, they'll, they'll get it in this year.
Yes. Yep, there are changes to the mapping this year, yes. So this section here, these are just to show you a little sample of, I should, let me back up for one minute. I mentioned that our IREDDI, you know, beginning of year, mid-year, and end of year. In June, we're going to do again what we did at the elementary level, but we're going to extend it to the middle school level. And we're going to do data celebrations, is what we called them last year, which is taking all of the data for the year, showing the growth and to the standard and individual student growth. We're doing the collaborative inquiry meetings across the grade levels and then celebrating the data. We do four boxes of high growth, of high achievement, high growth, low achievement, you know, all of that kind of stuff. And then what the curriculum coordinators, what we decide is if it's the will of the school committee is when we've done, we've got the whole year's group, that we come K to eight at a June meeting and show what our celebrations were, K to eight, that we shared with the teachers a week or two weeks before that too. That way, you're getting real-time data that we just went over, and we also use that for planning for the fall. So now we've got, we have the information to share when we start to make groupings at the various transitional levels in the fall as well, so. That, so anyway, so this is just giving you an example. We have up there, I have two slides, one for math and one for reading, for grades one through five at the elementary level, and then there's going to be, you can keep it there for a second. Then there's two slides that are going to be grades six through eight. So here it says overall placement, now that's based on, for math, four different domains or different areas of the standards. And so for math, for example, it's measurement data, algebraic thinking, numbers and operation, and geometry. But overall, if you look at the green line there or tier one, we're at the mid-year point, this was after the mid-year assessment. So what IREDDI consultants are suggesting is that we want our students to be at the fifty percent median performance on standards. That means halfway through the school year, they are successful and know mastery on half of the grade-level standards for the year. So here you can see it's forty-eight percent in math right now, which is close to the fifty, so that's on target. The yellow area is one grade level below, and then the red area is two grade levels or more below. So obviously, the objective is to decrease the tier three, or students at risk of not meeting grade-level achievement at the end of the school year, and increasing the tier one. Go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
So green means you're on grade level for like end-of-year, third grade, for example. So why does the fifty percent matter? Because for a tier, if someone's in yellow, that would make sense for some people to be in yellow potentially.
These are, this one is proficiency based on standards. So what it's saying is, the standards that are assessed in, let's say that was a third grade, like you're using, for example, that fifty percent or the median student that is at, fifty percent of the students are at halfway through the grade-level standards for typical proficiency, mastery of standards at the end of third grade.
Yeah, but where does that show there? Where does fifty percent?
Forty-eight percent, I'd say it's about fifty.
No, I know, but does green, like, I look at my kids, like, green means you're on grade level, right? So let's say you're somewhere in the third grade level. That means by, if you took MCAS right now, for example, you'd be shown, if it was exactly correlated, that you're on grade level, maybe meeting expectations, like.
So in, in, in IREDDI, there's a difference between if you're looking at a growth report versus an accomplishment report. So the, the growth reports that actually look very similar to this, they show the same as our paragraphs, the growth reports say like, it's actually just a percentage you are towards your expected growth or stretch. And so like, if, if you have kids that, that are, say, at seventy-five percent growth for the year, that means they are at the halfway point, that means that they are exceeding the expectation for what they would learn in the year at that point. They're seventy-five percent of the way through how their expected to grow for that year. Oh, their individual expected growth, but like a, a performance-based result at IREDDI, like, if it's just, if it's about the content and stuff, that this is breaking apart, how many kids are in, on grade level or at the right point in time halfway through the school year. Right? Right? So like, you see how the green bar has increased, like, in the beginning of the school year to the midpoint of the school year, more kids are on track to accomplish the grade-level standards by content. No, it's, it's not, because it's not talking about.
It's mastery of standards.
Mastery of the actual standards.
So fifty percent, forty-eight percent of kids have mastered this, this standard.
The standards that they should have at the midpoint.
At the midpoint.
Yep.
Okay.
And the first bar is the beginning of the year?
Correct, yep.
So I would just say, could we label those, please?
Sure, sure.
People would know.
Sometimes just look through reports all day long.
Right, but anybody else, bars that just kind of flow there.
Absolutely, good point.
And at the very specific kid level, you would know, like, that's what teachers look, they drill down to the actual student and look into different domains and look where they're at, you know, so they can target the instruction. But on that larger scale, it's just how are we doing, getting our kids to?
And in one through five, right, I mean, this is just from my own understanding, right? The tier-two piece is that they're regrouping and focusing on one standard with the kids who fell into tier-two for that specific standard so that they're, or that specific skill.
Exactly, because you have more, you have more room for growth with your tier-two kids, and you want to make sure that you're ensuring that they're growing a little bit quicker, which is what we're exactly seeing here. Meaning we're, you know, moving them right along and closing the gap.
The gap, yeah.
So, and what we thought would be helpful to you and to the public is, when the principals present on the twelve, they're each, instead of repeating Cuniff and what happens at Hosmer, and they're each taking one topic, one being SEL and responsive classroom, another being IREDDI assessment, so that they can speak a little bit more detail and give you a little bit more, I think that you'll find that really helpful. We did three different areas for that. If you switch to the next one, it just shows ELA for, again, elementary schools at fifty-seven percent of the median. And so we are on target, which is what we're looking at.
So does that, can I just say another thing? So the question here also would be, how, how would people know that, what the target is? Right, so is it still just, is it always fifty percent?
Yes, because it's mid-year. The standards, the typical growth is fifty percent or more.
Right, but that's what.
More is better.
So in addition, could we potentially add to that, to the bar, the second bar, right? No, just the, the target, right, a line that, a vertical line that shows the target at fifty percent, right? So that, you know, people are going to see fifty-seven percent, but what I don't have is anything to measure, like, hey, we're beyond the fifty percent mark already, right, at the halfway point. And then that shifts to a hundred percent at the, at the end of the school year?
Ideally, that's the ideal. Yeah, similar to MCAS, that's the ideal.
Right.
So you want this.
And Jeff, when you want this to be green. That would be the ideal.
It won't be, right, it probably won't be.
I get it. But you know what, it might be also, just to note this, I'm confused about it a little bit. Noting like, I don't know how IREDDI notes that you should be at fifty percent, because we are nearly there above, so.
That's what I'm saying, is like, put a vertical bar at where the target should be on the second, on the second bar graph. Right, that shows fifty percent.
This is where we expect you to be, and this is where you're at.
Right, and then you would see that there's green beyond to the right of the target, so that means that's good. And even in math, where it's so close, it's, it was fine.
Okay, sure.
And if you flip to the.
Can we tell you how to make that?
And if you flip to the.
No, I, no, it's fine. No, I, it's, it's the, what those bars mean is highly sensitive to what was pulled from.
Right.
And so like, talking about like a fifty percent, or if it's meeting or growth or content results, or what exactly that tier-one fifty-seven percent means, really highly depends on where it was pulled from in the district data. So I think that is just, there's lots and lots of things that come out of IREDDI data, and they all mean something subtly different that can be very confusing.
It's all very confusing. So can I ask a?
But it's great for us as teachers and educators, it is, for, I spend lots of time, yes.
No, I get it, it's highly confusing for parents.
Yes, sorry.
Yeah.
And we get reports, so just noting that it's highly confusing for parents, we should know that.
Yep. Sorry.
No, I'm sure I have it from a ten different places.
Okay.
What's more important from a teacher administrator perspective? The twenty-eight percent to forty-eight percent, or like, this is telling me something.
The twenty.
Whatever, you go back.
Tier one went from twenty-eight percent to forty-eight percent.
The first one.
Okay, the first one.
Yeah, the first one.
So, I mean, it's telling me that there's growth, and that's good. I don't know if that's more important than, or am I like dot dice?
There's a growth report that tells you something, so like, let's take, for example, like, when, I mean, like I said, I don't know exactly what these, this particular bar chart represents, because like, if it's representing the, the standard view.
It is.
Right, so if it's representing the standard view, then halfway through the year, you're expecting people to have learned half the standards that master those.
So that you should just put the line.
But twenty-five percent at the beginning of the year is also not that unexpected, that at the beginning of the year, some kids are a little bit above grade level and they already know some stuff. You know what I mean?
But there's no target, right? For, for the first bar, there's no, there's no target, because it's just, this is the beginning of the school year, this, you're assessing, here's where my kids as a group are, right? For how much of the standards do they really know? But then the mid-year, so what parents need to understand is that it's okay that their children may or may not be exactly on grade level at mid-year. We're targeting some additional instruction to help prop those, those students up, which they may or may, those parents may or may not be fully understanding of, right? Because they may not all understand the, how kids are being regrouped and targeted instruction and so forth under tier-two. But the idea is that ultimately, our goal is, it kind of shifts through time, right? Because in the third bar is going to say, our goal is really to have a hundred percent green. That's what our, always our goal is, right?
And that's, okay, so then doing the little line a little does make sense.
Okay, okay.
Because that's where you want to be at this point, right?
Right, it's fifty percent or above, more is better when it comes to that, right? Standards mastery.
Your superintendent's going to pick up and go down.
Yeah. But the also thing to keep in mind is when teachers work in these groups in grade levels, they look at this, but then, and then they, they make groups, and then they go, okay, this is one data point, let's use our other data. They don't just go, because they're like, oh, but you know what, these three, you know, we either, in my class, we didn't get to this geometry section here, or, you know, the Phantasm Penheller is showing me this, or, there's many. So this is just one factor of multiple sources, yes?
So the superintendent's going to go vote.
Okay.
And I think that we were just having a little, small conversation that we might end at the middle school IREDDI conversation and launch on the second meeting with all of your exciting goals, because it kind of sets the stage for.
I just have a second.
Yes, that's fine, goals is great.
Okay.
Yeah, let's just go through this so that we're on the same track. So for, would you please move to the next slide, please? And this is six to eight math, and then there'll be literacy. So again, forty-nine percent, and the first light bar is showing September, October testing, and then the second bar is showing the January, February testing.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
In elementary, there was a much bigger, again, maybe I'm like misinterpreting data, so please tell me, there was a much bigger change from September to January in elementary than there was in September to January in.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't read into that at all because, a number of reasons. One is there's K to five, so there's six grade levels we're talking about in the elementary chart. You're not even comparing now, it's apples and oranges, there's three grade levels here. It could be one grade level is at sixty percent and one's at forty percent. You know what I'm saying, and that's the data we look at, we look at every student, every class, every, I'm just doing the overall to show a school or the elementary level.
And I know, I was going to ask a question to you after.
Yeah.
And I know, like, for this, for the purposes of this, it doesn't make sense to do that. But I do think generally, I don't know how everyone understands, but I'd love to see within each grade levels, a graph for, for each one.
I mean, I think, I think like at the, at the end of the year, when the end-of-year data comes out, in kind of talking about it as like, this is a big budget investment of us, like, we could look at it in a curriculum subcommittee meeting, like, the actual end-of-year results of all three, those things, because there's a terrific amount more of data. This is just like the really general.
Exactly.
I mean, the other thing, like, you think about elementary schools when you're including grades one and two and this as well, the difference in their ability to just take the assessment from the first round to the second round can cause much bigger. And remember that's just also not growth.
So, so, kind of along that, that pathway, I'm thinking that it really doesn't make any sense to show the first bar at all, right? I mean, so the question is really, what are we trying to communicate here? And I think if we want to just show the point-in-time accomplishment, right, of, hey, at the fifty, in the halfway of the school year, we're, this is where we are, right? I'm not so sure that the September to, because Kendra's kind of, I'm understanding, I think where Kendra is kind of getting hung up on, which is, she's seeing two bars and identifying the difference between the two bars and growth, and it's not showing growth, it shows two distinct things in time.
But you like.
But I think that's confusing.
But for all the wrong reasons, yeah.
Actually, can I ask a question, because I, I haven't dug into this, obviously, being in budget finance, I'm curious myself. So one thing I, obviously, on the elementaries, it started out at twenty-eight and, and it started out at thirty-eight percent at the middle school, so maybe I'm wrong. So does this mean that really coming out of the elementary grades, more students going into middle school are actually at above grade level right from the start? Is that, is that?
No, they're not above grade level, they might, no more standards of the grade level.
So I guess that's what I mean, they're, they're further in their knowledge of where they should be in that grade.
Now, like, like I said, Lindsay was pointing out, yes, that green also has early, mid, late, in the middle of that green, like, early in the grade-level knowledge of that, middle, like, you know, so there's more gradations of that. But for the purposes of, you know, budget, we're just trying to show this is a vehicle we're using, this is just the overall part of it. Like Kendra's asked, and I think Lindsay, you just mentioned too, and actually David, you did too, when we, in June, we will show the grade level each school, and, and that gives a lot more information.
Right, this is, this is hard because in September, grade six and grade seven and grade eight are very different, based on the fact that they're coming in from fifth grade, or they're coming in from sixth grade, or they're coming in from seventh grade, and by aggregating them, we're, you know, we, Kendra's starting to ask a lot of questions about how to dive into that, all of that, and tease it apart, right? So the grade level, specific grade level things, I think, give people a better sense of, a better way to understand what we're talking about.
Sure.
Because the fifty percent of standards across the entire three grades is hard for someone to comprehend, right? That that's, like, what, I don't know how I'm, what I was trying to say here, that it, it doesn't mean the same thing, because they're not, I mean, it means the same thing, but it's not something that, I don't know what the value is, right? For somebody, I think we're just, so the question is, why, what are we showing? Right, ultimately, right, what are we trying to show here, what, as an accomplishment? Is it that we are hitting our target, or is it, right?
At the district level, yes, that's showing that, but you, but the, we don't use it for that. We use it at the individual school, individual class, and then just student level. Yeah, should I?
Putting in this, putting it in this.
Yeah, maybe it doesn't belong in this slide deck, because.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to get to.
Yeah, I'm kind of wondering in terms of accomplishments, maybe we just want to say like.
Last year, really, what I did is last year, we did, for the first year, and so I thought, okay, but maybe we just.
Yeah, it might just, I mean, just kind of like how you identified it before that, grade-level teams are using it at the school-grade, team, class, student level to.
Yeah, okay.
Or maybe just put it in text, yeah.
It is in text, but maybe not.
It is in text, but maybe not put it here, but do it in June.
Right.
As a, almost as a return on investment, right?
Yeah, I think it would be good for us to dive just a little bit. We could almost have like a little bit of a data meeting with this group to kind of talk about what it means.
So will we, so will we move it from?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, too. It's actually adding more confusion than it is benefiting, right?
It sparks, it sparks more questions.
And I do think that it's not, there is a place for it and not necessarily just at the end of the school year, right? But, but also potentially in the annual report. When we get to having an annual report that's kind of more September, October. Because that would be a place for us to kind of coalesce all the things that happened last year. And, you know, not only do those data celebrations, but also just in general, big accomplishments. So we'll be able to say, oh, look at the, you know, the fifty percent mark, I think is a hard thing for people to kind of get, what's, what's in front of us and what's, what have we already done, so.
And there's actually a ninety-five percent correlation between IREDDI results and MCAS results, which is interesting.
Yeah.
Too.
Wow.
Yep, yep. That was a seller to teachers when we came back in, in September to show them that, so.
But there, so again, kind of for the annual report, I could easily see you have a lot of space to talk about, to explain that part and if people around town want, you know, parents.
That's a really good idea.
That's cool doing, I think, doing a data dive about looking at, there's so many components that I don't understand.
Yeah.
Whether it's growth or whether it's standards, whatever, is, whatever. And then we, from there, from that conversation teasing out, what are the pieces that we want to start talking about publicly and bragging about, whatnot, so.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
That sounds good. Teresa and I can run it, it's fine.
Yeah. I will not be running.
We're in. Partially Joe, but I, I've done it a lot too.
So we ask a lot of questions.